I'll follow up on that, Connie.
Thank you.
That's a frustration to me because that's not what I was led to believe, or maybe I'm just misinformed.
Okay, thank you.
Ready to get started?
Right when you are, Mr. Chair, yes.
Okay, great. We'll call the meeting to order. The planning commission to order this Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. Karen, could you call roll, please?
Yes. Don Daniels.
Here.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Connie Coleman-Lackady.
Present.
Paul Wegman.
Present.
James Guerrero.
Here.
And Nancy Hudson-Eckles is excused this evening, so you do have quorum.
Thank you. Before us, we have the minutes of September 2nd, 2020. I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Mr. Wegman made it first.
Second.
Mr. Pearson, second. Any comments, changes? Hearing or seeing none at this present time? All those in favor by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, minutes passed as written. Ms. Tiffany, is there any changes to our agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the public comment period. And Karen, is that correct? We have not received any public comment to the city?
We received a day or two ago, an email that I forwarded to all of the commissioners from Mr. Tim Lynch, from Tim Lynch Homes. And that is the only written comment that I have received at this moment.
Okay, just a clarification, if we could, under the public comment. I noticed that, is this to be in record of the public hearing that we're going to have instead of under public comment? So which?
Actually, thank you for the correction. That would be correct. He was, I'm writing in regard to a proposed amendment, so my mistake, thank you.
Okay, no problem. So no other received comments under public comment at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. So we'll close the public comment. And at this time, we have no unfinished business at number six. So we'll go to the public hearing, the proposed 2021 comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. Ms. Tiffany, before we open it up, do you want to say any?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair. I'll just share my screen briefly. Give me just a second to find the right thing to open. Sorry. Where are we? Oh, for heaven's sakes. Sorry, everybody.
No problem.
There's too many things open on my screen. Okay, so where we're at, I'm just going to take you right into your packet tonight. Starting on page four is the memo regarding the seven comprehensive plan amendments that are being introduced so far in the 2021 package. And as you know, there was a conversation had already on August 24th by the city council about this list of proposed amendments. And at that point, the city council did not make any changes to what was brought to them, nor did they add any. But the opportunity remains for the planning commission to add or edit any of these amendments or add new ones. And then the city council might do the same before they take action to set this docket for next summer's or spring's analysis and action. So as of right now, there are seven amendments. They are all text related. Some of them also have some map significant changes, actually. I'll walk through them one at a time. Please stop me at any point if I start to go too fast. First of all, there is a suggestion or a recommendation that the current sustainability chapter within the comprehensive plan be replaced with a new one that would be titled Energy and Climate Change. And long story short, this is soon going to be a state law requirement for local governments to do. The reason Lakewood is suggesting to do it now is that there's actually some grant dollars available to do this as kind of an early implementer. And we have received a grant under that premise to move forward with this in the 2021 cycle. Really quickly, there is an outline here, starting on page four. It jumps over to page five of the various sections within this new chapter. So beginning with purpose and then the regulatory context regarding climate change and what's being required of the city. And then also some guidance that's available from state agencies. Those discussion of impacts of climate change within our local area. Then a discussion of greenhouse gas inventory and the output for the city of Lakewood. Findings and recommendations, and then some reduction goals, policies and programs, which would include things that Lakewood has already done. So just recognizing action that the city has taken already related to greenhouse gas and climate change preventative measures, if you want to call it that. And then following all of those, you would have at the last a summary of implementing actions for this item. This is something that Mr. Buwer is taking the lead on drafting right now. So I'm going to stop sharing and see if he wants to add anything to the discussion.
First of all, can you hear me okay? Because in the past, we've had issues with my connection.
No, it's good.
Secondly, even though I have a good connection right now, I'm at work and the janitorial staff is vacuuming the third floor. So you may have difficulty hearing me, so my apologies. We are in the process of writing a draft document on climate change. The goal is to see if we can place together or put in place a draft by the end of the year and then go ahead and work, hiring a consultant to review that draft. I'm also in the process of speaking with Shelley Helder, our lobbyist who actually worked on some of this legislation. And just so that you know, the legislature was actually thinking about enacting something for all cities in this last legislative session. And the response back was many cities are not ready. And rather than go ahead and enact something, why don't you offer up some sort of a grant program to have local municipalities apply and see what kind of results you get back? So that's what was just chosen. So to some degree, Lakewood is a bit of an example or a test case on how this might work in the future. This document is actually going to be in two parts. One will be an amendments, a variety of amendments to the city's comprehensive plan dealing with greenhouse gases and climate change. And the second part will be a climate action, climate change action program, which will talk about specific things the city can do to reduce greenhouse gases. There's actually many things that the city is already doing that's not getting credit for. And so that's a part of this report that I think is important to recommend to everybody. Another aspect of this document will be a way in which people can actually calculate how much greenhouse gas they actually emit. National average is around 64,000 pounds per year. And then Pacific Northwest, it's actually very significantly less, around 46,000 pounds per year because we use hydro power. But individuals, the goal is to have individuals be able to go in and actually calculate out their greenhouse gas based upon a couple of factors. I was able to do it for myself and actually it was pretty easy. And so that's a part of this process. But more to follow on this, it's actually pretty interesting. And I think you'll find it a tool because the last thing I want for it to happen is for PSRC or the state legislature to come in with some very heavy-handed requirements. And there are things that we can do that are fairly easy and simple that will help us with this problem.
Great.
Or if you don't think it's a problem, perceive problem.
Yeah.
I'm trying to stay out of the politics on this and just speak specifically to the facts. And as you, as you'll see this report, you'll see multiple footnotes as to where this information comes from. At this point, we've calculated or determined the greenhouse gas effect for the state of Washington. We know what it is for now Pierce County, so that's been included in the draft report. And I'm currently working on the specific impacts in Lakewood. For Lakewood, just some background information, I'll be quiet. Impacts upon Chambers Creek was increase in water elevation. Issues on Clover Creek, you're going to see potential flooding in that area. You might also see some problems with the lakes, increased acidity or things of that nature, or decrease in oxygenation. Water itself appears to be okay because most of our water is from groundwater and it comes from Lakewood Water District. The overall impacts to the city are not that large, but they are much more significant for the region and for Washington State. So more information to come. And the one thing I am a little apprehensive about is to try to do a climate change report in one year is extremely difficult because in other examples where this is done, there is a lot of public participation and comment. And because of COVID-19 and the requirements the state has placed upon this program, that's going to be difficult. So I want to alert the planning commission into a potential problem early on.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Buwer? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Buwer.
All right, so we'll keep going. That was the first one. There are seven total applications. Why is this not going down? There we go. Okay. The second few are really, I won't call them just technical updates, but they are pretty self-explanatory. If you remember, this year in the 2020 comprehensive plan cycle, there was a ray zone of a number of the Springbrook parcels from residential to industrial business park. And so now there's some changes that need to happen in the comprehensive plan to reflect that. Because at one point, there was discussion in the comp plan, for instance, of using Springbrook as a compact, high-density residential area. And with what the council has now done to refocus it for industrial use, that obviously needs to change. 2021-3 is regarding updating the comp plan to reflect the fact that this year, the city updated and adopted a new parks legacy plan. So that'll happen without much ado. 2021-04 is talking about a number of different housing-related issues. There's items that have been discussed over the last few legislative sessions and some bills that have been passed. And there's some things that the city is trying to get ahead of a little bit related to affordable housing, transitory accommodations, and quote, "the missing middle housing." So that's being drafted right now, but it'll kind of be a mixed bag of various housing ideas and policies that'll be added here shortly. 2021-05 is related to Western State Hospital. And it's kind of a moving target at this point. I can't give you a whole lot of detail, other than to say, right now, the city is in the middle of working with Western State Hospital and DSHS about an update to Western State's master plan for its site in Lakewood. And it's quite an extensive change. There's conversation ongoing about just demolishing the current hospital, replacing it with a new hospital, saving some of the buildings, demolishing some of the other buildings. Obviously, a multi-year process, and it will change the number of patients in total onsite, as well as the types of patients. So whenever that gets moved through, we're thinking at this point it's going to be getting to a hearing examiner process potentially before the end of the year. If not, it'll be early next year. Once we have a better sense of what's happening with that, there'll be some changes to be reflected in the comprehensive plan about Western State Hospital as well. And then 2021-06 is another one that's relatively simple. It's going to be updating the fact that there has already been adopted a downtown subarea plan and that we're in the middle. And it'll be drawing to conclusion about the same time that these 2021 comp plan amendments are moving through the planning commission next spring, Lakewood Station District Subarea as well. So just recognizing those within the comprehensive plan language. The last one is a little more complicated again, 2021-07. This is related to the potential for taking two existing centers of local importance, doing away with them and creating a new center of local importance that's focused on industrial uses. This is something where, right now, COLI 4 is the industrial business park in Clover Park Technical College area in the city. And COLI 5 includes much of South Tacoma Way. And within it, there is the International District for the city. So if you were to look at a map of all of the current centers of local importance within the city, they're here in colors. And we're talking about this area here, the east side of the city. Number four is the one that's the Clover Park Technical College and the industrial park. And five is the South Tacoma Way area. What the heck is a center of local importance? It's something that's inside the city's comprehensive plan. And it's, in some cases, a way to qualify for transportation or Parks and Rec or other infrastructure grant programs, for instance, to have these recognized areas. It's also a way to help assist with planning. So for instance, you'll see this green one over here. It's called the Fort Stillicum Center of Local Importance. And it helps direct policy and actions over time for that area related very much to the park. But what we're talking about, again, getting back to four and five, is to take these two and do away with them to create a new one that's really focused on industrial uses. And so it would include these zones here in this middle paragraph, industrial, industrial business park, commercial, air corridor one and two, public institutional, and then there's a tiny bit of neighborhood commercial. The point of this is to set up the city for, A, economic development grants for land use planning and such, but also for transportation dollars for this section of the city in particular, but also to its connection down to 512, to I-5, to the railroad, as a way to have regional freight activity and economic activity in the city.
Tiffany?
Yes.
Excuse me, can you go back to the previous slide prior to this last one that you just had?
So this?
No, go back one more.
Sure.
Okay, and then go upside up for number six and seven, the purple and the light blue. What's, what are those parcels down there of importance at the bottom?
Sure. So that kind of fuchsia-looking one is number one. That's Tillicum area. Number seven is Woodbrook.
Okay.
And number eight over on the west side is Lake City West. And the one on the top is Custer Road and Walmart. So these have all been on the books in the city's comprehensive plan for a while. And it may actually be over time that we need to take a look, for instance, at Tillicum and Woodbrook to make sure they're still reflective as well of the land uses that are now happening there. But we're giving it a go with this one now for this next cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is a map of what's being talked about right now. Of course, it's subject to change. But what we tried to do was include all of the industrial type properties on this east side of the city into a single center of local importance. And so this right here, that my cursor's on right now, that's pretty much number four, that current one. And then this orange is the South Tacoma Way section of COLI number five. What's been done here is, first of all, those two are put together. You also have, again, air corridors one and two, so the purple on the east side of those existing COLIs. And then you have the darker gray along Lakeview and Durango, which are also industrially zoned properties. Then there's the public institutional in blue. This is a very large area. It's about 1,200 acres, so I'm going to go back up again. And four and five each are about 300 acres, so 600 there plus the additional area around it. It is a large area of the city. But it's all tied together with this industrial focus. So if you were to look at a map and include this new proposed center of local importance, it would be over here. And again, you would still have the remaining centers still identified without any changes. And then this just would be the new one. And this is completely Tiffany on a Wednesday evening calling it East City. This is not by any means the official name, but just for reference here is what I'm calling it. And then if you were to look at the full city zoning map with this included, again, my cursor right now is over the downtown subarea, that whole section in red. The current planning on the Lakewood Station District, this triangle down here, is south. And then over here, this whole thing, this whole out black line, outline, is what we'd be talking about for a new center of local importance, focused very much on industrial development. There was a question when this was brought to the city council in August about how this might affect the International District because it is included within what would be called an industrial center. And the industrial center is mentioned in the comprehensive plan. And as written, it talks about the inclusion of Paul Door World, Buhan Market, H Mart, Great American Casino, and the Lee Medical Center, all along the South Tacoma Way, along with all the other businesses there. And in response to the council, the department's reply was that, no, by having an action taken to adopt a center of local importance, that would not change the parcels that are part of the International District or any of the uses on those parcels unless the council took separate action to make those changes. So again, going back to the map, that orange would stay unchanged within this center unless the council were to decide to take action to change it. So yes, they would now be part of this center, but no, there would not be any changes to the International District itself. And then there would, right now, and I assume would remain, language in the comprehensive plan that talks about the International District. So down here, you'll see in the last two bullets, promoting individual neighborhood character in areas such as the International District and to encourage development of an individual identity for the district. So that is there in the comprehensive plan, it would not go away. So getting back to why I'm talking to you at all right now, which is a public hearing. We're in this process, we're doing the public hearing tonight on this docket. A month from now, you are scheduled to take action on the docket list and forward it on to the council with edits or not, you know, sending it forward with or without change. November 23rd is when the council will take it up. And then December 7th is when they are scheduled to take action to approve the resolution. And then after that, we get into sausage making. This is where the city takes it back internally, looks at each of these more substantively fleshed out amendments and provide environmental SEPA review, as well as the Commerce Growth Management Act type of review. Next spring, it comes back to you again for the full public hearing process and action. And then next summer or fall, there's going to be this package in front of the council. So before I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, as Ms. Deveraux said, you did receive one set of written comments from Tim Lynch. And long story short, the comments are requesting that there actually be a new amendment added in. And it would be related to the Thorn Lane interchange and down in Tillicum, the interchanges with I-5 that have been improved with the construction that's ongoing there and changing some of the parcels around those interchanges to reflect a more commercial type of development. So that letter is in your materials that you received from Ms. Deveraux. Other than that, I'm ready to answer questions or step out of your way.
So at this time, I'll then just publicly open up the public hearing to address exactly what Tiffany just said. The request from Tim Lynch is in record that is, we acknowledge it under the public hearing. So any questions that we have at this time from fellow commissioners in regard to Tiffany's report or the letter that we've received under the public hearing?
So what?
Excuse me, just a minute, to Mr. Guerrero.
Thank you. So regarding the letter we received, is it? Is that something that we can look at adding? Or is it really something that falls outside of our purview at this point?
It is something that is within your purview, Mr. Guerrero. So the planning commission could take action on exactly what Mr. Lynch is requesting, or it could do something else with that idea. Or you could actually, unrelated to his comments, the planning commission can add anything into its recommendations in terms of new comprehensive plan amendments for the council to consider.
Mr. Guerrero?
So is it still the city's recommendation that we defer this until the construction is complete? Or is it? What is that, the city's recommendation?
I do not know of any recommendation at all on this letter that we just received from Mr. Lynch. So I'll turn to Mr. Buwer and see if there's any change to what was provided the planning commission last time this was raised.
Sorry, Mr. Buwer, guess what?
I just wanted to confirm, these were the, these are the same parcels that were, that were dropped last year, right? It's, there's no, nothing different.
Correct. He's coming back.
Yeah.
Now that another year's worth of construction has occurred and asking if the time is right now, yeah.
Right.
Mr. Wegman?
I guess that's, they're talking all around what I've got an interest in. What should we do about this at this point in time? It seemed to make sense what he's saying, but you know, does it? How does it impact us in a negative way if we just say, let's put it on there and let's get going with it? Because I know we've been talking about the Tillicum area for, shoot, long before I was on the planning commission.
Yeah, so just to clarify, Tiffany, is that currently, under that area, it's designated as the center of local importance. But Mr. Lynch is requesting that block, so to speak, within those parcels, is requesting that the zoning be changed to NC-2, Neighborhood Commercial 2. Is that correct?
Yes. And so that center of local importance, as I mentioned, was put in the comprehensive plan a while ago, before it was ever anticipated that there would be this I-5 expansion. And so there may be, whether it's this cycle or whenever the council decides to do it, there may be a need to go back and reexamine again that Tillicum center, update some of that language if they wish, or to simply reaffirm what they were hoping for at that time when they wrote it originally. But Mr. Buwer's back in case he has more to say.
Yes, Mr. Buwer.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Tonight is the public hearing. You're not scheduled to take action until a following meeting. Let us get an opportunity to reexamine the letter and provide you a recommendation. And then you could consider that when you take action on the proposed docket for 2021. And right now, I need to spend a little time looking at it. And I also need to confirm with Public Works' construction schedule, as well as the construction of the connection road from Gravie Lake Drive to Union Avenue. Thorn Lane.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank you. That's a great recommendation. And I think if any other commissioners have any in disagreement or is that satisfactory at this particular time? Seeing or hearing nothing, so, okay. So any other comments under the public hearing? Any other questions for staff? Hearing or seeing none at this time. We'll close the public hearing on the proposed 2021 comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. Thank you. Under new business, I don't see anything under new business. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So now, Mr. Boki, welcome. Any reports from the council side?
Well, not a whole heck of a lot. We're still under lockdown. We're doing the same thing you guys are, doing Zoom meetings. So just a couple of things. Road construction continues, and so hopefully we'll see paving here pretty soon, in the next week, week and a half on Onyx. So that should be, be well on its way by the end of the month or well on its way to completion by the end of the month. And it sounds like, as of the other night, that the farmers markets on Fridays would continue into October. Because I think the last one was supposed to be this week or something. And I don't have my notes, but they can't be far. But those will continue on to October because of, you know, people really enjoy it, even though you have to socially distance and everything. It has been a hit over in Fort Stillicum Park. So that's going to continue for a few more weeks beyond that. So as of that, that's about all.
Great, thank you. Any questions for council member Boki? Nothing? Okay, thank you. And now, how about some reports from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to bring you through an update on what's going on with the Lakewood Station District Subarea planning process. And this is the tip of the spear, if you want to talk about it like that. We're having a quick discussion about it tonight. A month from now, roughly, on the 21st of October, we're going to pick it up again. And in fact, this has yet to be set, but it's possible that immediately before this But it's possible that immediately before this meeting, we'll be having a stakeholder open house type of event online. And if that happens, we'll be sure to invite all of you. You're welcome to attend. Please consider doing that if you're available. If it doesn't happen that night, we'll let you know when it is anyway. But prior to your October 21st meeting, we're going to have some kind of stakeholder outreach event. But after that, on October 21st, you'll start to see in more detail what's going on with the Lakewood Plan. And then beginning in November, you'll actually begin the official review and public hearing process on this subarea package. So I'll open this up really quickly. All right, so if you remember earlier this year when we talked about it, there was an idea about should we change the boundaries of what's in the comprehensive plan identified as a Lakewood Station Subarea? And the city council actually did make some changes to the borders at the start of this year. So what you see on this map in the yellow is the downtown plan, which is already done. This is the border as of right now for the Lakewood Station District Subarea. And obviously, it's right along I-5 and the 512 interchange is the northeast corner. It comes down and along in the Pacific Avenue areas where you see the Lakewood Station itself, the Sounder Station. This northern horizontal border is 108th Street Southwest. And this western border is Bridgeport Way with a few little jogovers because of parcel zoning. Within this same area, again, now looking at ortho photos, you'll see that across I-5, you've got Joint Base Lewis McCord. Within this, a couple of other landmark spots is the St. Clair Hospital. And then West Pierce Fire and Rescue Station is also there along with what's being called the Lakewood Landing. It's hoped to be a multi-phased major development, again, along this I-5 corridor that may be mixed use, so residential as well as commercial uses. Oh, I'm sorry. And one other point I wanted to make is within this boundary, particularly up here in the north side, there is existing residential development. And within this red boundary is where the housing analysis has been done for the project. Jumping to the next one, you'll see this is more expansive of a map, meaning it goes beyond that triangle shape. You've got this outer range of a half a mile from the Sounder Station. So if this is the center point, all the transportation analysis has been handled for this whole area in order to be able to see not only within the subarea itself, but connection particularly up to the downtown subarea plan could be made better, more efficient, and also include non-auto types of transportation improvements. I think everybody knows this in principle, but this is some demographic data regarding the Lakewood Station area. First of all, it's about 3% of the city's population. That grows by 10% within the half-mile area that I just showed you for transportation purposes. It is below median income for the most part, and it is below the county's median income as well. It is also ethnically and racially more diverse than the rest of the city. It's also one of those areas that's been identified as a racially and ethnically concentrated area of poverty by the American Community Survey. So what that means is over 50% of the residents are people of color and that property rates are either higher than 40% in the area or it's more than three times the average poverty rate of tracks in the larger metropolitan area. So to be very blunt about it, it's poorer, it's more diverse. And right now, it's not a huge population, but what we're talking about is adding population to this area. It is lower ownership for housing and higher renter percentages than in the city overall. And then the income and home values are also lower than the citywide averages. It's also less education, meaning there's fewer residents with a high school diploma or GED or college education. In terms of employment, this area has mostly retail and services, as you see. The half of the businesses are service, retail and restaurants, sales, that type of thing comprise, excuse me, another 29%. There's about 170 businesses in the area and about 2,300 employees. If you go just beyond that to that half-mile radius, that grows considerably. And you'll see here a little bit more about the demographic economic situation. 18% of the workers are earning under $15,000 a year. And there's about 44% of the jobs within the area that have an annual income above $40,000 a year. So given that background of the outline and the character of this area, we've been working on this, as you know, since last December. And since then, in terms of public engagement, we've used that website as a way to keep people involved and up to date. Prior to COVID hitting, we had an in-person stakeholder retreat on February 28th. And that had not only resident representatives, neighborhood association representatives, but also developers and utilities and transit representatives all there to provide their initial feedback and identification of issues that should be addressed within the subarea process. Since then, because of COVID, we've been doing things remotely. We did have several updates to you and to the city council so far this year. And this will continue and intensify now that we're getting to almost, I guess, around the bend toward home on this project. We've also had a survey that was mailed out within, started late May, and it went through most of July to gather information from residents, from business employees, and also from those who use the Sound Transit Station. And so we're hoping, as I just mentioned, to have some sort of event in October, but we're thinking it'll probably be virtual. If by some chance we have an opportunity, we will be scheduling something in person as well. In addition to the website, in addition to those online and survey things, we've also had information included in the Lakewood Connections Magazine. And we've done several other mailings to residents and businesses just to let them know that this is ongoing. And those were done in multiple languages as well to try to maximize outreach. So really quickly, some of the survey results. First of all, those who responded, about 14% of the responders were residents. 16 or so percent were employees of the area. Most of the people who answered this live in Lakewood but outside of the subarea. And then you had some who work in the city but are outside of the area. And then I'm assuming this 9.89%, these are people that are strictly commuters coming through the Sound Transit Station because we did reach out specifically to people using that station to try to get their feedback as well. So down here in the blue, in terms of those who responded, 14% of them were renters, almost 86% of them were owners. And if you look at the subarea itself, it's a little bit different. There's a little more, excuse me, a little fewer of the respondents in the area that are homeowners and a little more that are renters. And then in terms of those who answered, the age was obviously up above 50% for the majority as opposed to those between 30 and 49. So older people, most of them did not live in this area. Some of them worked in the area, some of them used Sound Transit Station. So things, the top five that people liked now, that housing is affordable in the area, in the subarea, it's easier to commute to or from. The station is right there. It's good for business and it's also close to JBLM. And you'll see in a couple of other slides, there's a, there's kind of some themes that come out of these top five answers. What are ideas for the subarea that these people consider important or very important? New jobs, having sidewalks and pathways, i.e. pedestrian access, additional uses, be they retail, restaurant, or entertainment. Again, connections that aren't car-related, but these are specifically to get to downtown. And looking at well-designed and attractive development. For those who lived in there, they also said well-designed and attractive, the new retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses, new jobs, sidewalks and pathways, new open spaces and parks. For those who worked in the area specifically, new jobs, so even more there. Again, the well-designed and attractive, the new commercial uses, the sidewalks and pathways. And what I found interesting is those who work in the area, many of them were saying that new homes in the area would be good. And I'm interpreting that as perhaps they would be willing to consider living closer to where they work if there were additional housing units available. A little couple of items about the Sounder Station specifically. More people would use it if there were easier walking connections to get to it and if there was additional parking there. And then these others, which comprised about a quarter of responses, really related to safety in the parking lot, safety between the parking lot and the station. And so it all tied into some of the other feedback that we got in the rest of the survey. Just really quickly for a smile here, you see some of the kids' answers. Looking for a park, looking for safety, looking for redevelopment of some of the buildings, and then having an area with a balanced economy. So I take that to mean more jobs within the area as well. In terms of schedule, we're at the point now, as I mentioned, of coming to you starting in October with the actual documents and provide you more detail. But the process between now and October 21st will be additional stub, stakeholder and public outreach. We're going to do another mailer to everyone to let them know what's going on with the schedule as well as where they can see the actual draft documents. And we'll have that open house and stakeholder meeting either on the 21st, right before Planning Commission, or another date that we'll make sure you have plenty of notice about. By December 16th, if all goes swimmingly, the legislative review by Planning Commission is done. And then next February would be when the city council would pick it up. And we're anticipating at this point that city council would, would finish their process by May 24th. And so by next Memorial Day, this is adopted, meaning it goes into effect next June. And I will stop sharing and see if anybody has any questions.
Yes, any questions regarding that presentation? Good job, seeing none, I guess no questions at this time, good job.
All right.
All right, any other reports from fellow commissioners? Any questions? Nothing, boy, all silent today, quiet. Okay, then nothing else on the agenda? It looks good. And so I'll call the, oh, Mr. Wegman, sure. Unmute yourself.
The, is there any update on Veterans Drive or any of that through there? How's that coming?
Mr. Bueller?
Veterans Drive is coming.
Oh, Mr. Boy.
Yeah. Veterans Drive is coming along very well. They, if you've gone through there, they have a number of areas that are already have some pavement down, not the final pavement, but at least the first part of it done. So I'm a little bit confused as to, they're going to make a lot of progress up to the park or into the park, so from Gravely to the park. Most of that will be done by late fall when they have to button up for the year. And then the other portion, I don't know how far they'll get, but you know, they're going to go all the way to the Veterans Hospital entrance. So that will not be done before, I drove through there the other day, they haven't even started on that portion really. So there, but it is, it's clipping along at a, at a really pretty rapid rate.
Good, Mr. Bueller?
Mr. Boki took most of, yeah, just a few remarks. I know that Public Works has been beginning the process to put in new mailboxes. And while that may sound like a small feat, it's a big job because they're doing them in bunches and trying to get everybody to agree to it. And then there's a process to get the keys to the post office. And we're trying to make that as easy as possible on property owners. So that's underway as well.
Good, Mr. Wegman?
Yeah, and so then what, are they going to finish up? They're supposed to be around about the end of Veterans and Gravely Lake. Is that what, isn't that what's supposed to happen?
I don't know where the, I don't know that.
I'm not ready to, I know that there's been some discussion about putting a roundabout in, but I think they're going to wait until another phase of Gravely Lake improvements to install it.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I, I think that's a Gravely Lake project.
Okay, that's the question. So the Gravely Lake, it'll kind of terminate there and it'll be left in some kind of intermediate stage. So, and that's the same as that, that new subdivision or housing developer.
Yeah, the Barker property.
Yes.
Yes.
Because on the, as you get close to the freeway, it looks like they've terminated that little road in there. And I guess they're waiting until they do the Gravely Lake to finish the sidewalks and stuff there.
Next year, the plan right now is for next year to do the rest of Gravely Lake Drive from, well, so from Nianza on the south end to Washington and then make the corner and do the, put a roundabout at the corner of Washington and Interlock. And then that's where it would stop.
Right.
Right. Is the developer putting in sidewalks there or is that getting punted until the, the bigger project? Do they kind of plan on that and put them in?
I think Dave will answer that.
Mr. Bueller?
When the preliminary plat was approved, there was requirement for full curb gutter and sidewalk on both Veterans as well as Gravely Lake Drive. That's how it's been approved. The final plat has not been approved yet. Until they complete construction, then that work will be done. At some point, there's going to be a decision made about whether or not the developer puts in the sidewalk on Gravely Lake Drive, making sure that it comports to being compatible with the other improvements. Or if the city chooses to do something different, then the developer will have to provide funds to the city of Lakewood and the city then puts in the curb gutter and sidewalk on their behalf.
So either way, they're responsible though?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, no other questions at this time, so we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Really quick.
Mr. Bueller?
Sorry, I'm trying to give you a present. October 7th, there is no Planning Commission meeting because there's a council meeting that night. So your next meeting will be October 21st.
Okay, Tiffany, is that it, Mr. Bueller?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you didn't forget Tiffany.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, now we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.